Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to welcome, I thought I was supposed to wait for that to come down.
There we are.
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm just, I want to thank everybody. I really wanted to take a moment before I, before I open our meeting to really thank all the other directors that accepted this responsibility that we all, we all, and for the good work that we're all undertaking and the meaningful work for here at the city of Surrey, whether it's municipal appointees or provincial. I just really want to thank, I want to thank any of the public that's either here in person or greeting us online, just to allow for that opportunity to share the good work we're doing, but as well to receive some of those questions back. So with that, I just want to call our meeting to order, our inaugural 2025 Surrey Police Board Meeting to order. And by doing that, I will just say that the Surrey Police Board is, recognizes the work that takes place on the ancestral, traditional and unceded territories of the Coast Salish people in the city that we now call Surrey. I thank you for that and pass it over to the options.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First up, we have adoption of the agenda for February 12th, 2025. We have a set of minutes from November 27th, 2024, and I'll make a note that these were reviewed by the previous Surrey Police Board Administrator to be approved and adopted. Thanks very much. And up next, we have a presentation by Inspector Sook Sudhu and Inspector Darren Shepherd on the district model.
Presentation. I'm going to. Mr. Chair, if I may, I'll do the introductions myself and Deputy LaSage. Good evening, everyone, and welcome, and thank you for volunteering for the Surrey Police Board. Community policing is very important to us. It's one of our mainstay mantras, and we've been working towards that, as you know, since November 29th as POJ in the communities of Wally and Newton. And I'd like to show you a little bit of what we're starting to do, and I'll ask Deputy LaSage, who is in charge of our community policing bureau, to introduce our speakers this evening. Deputy?
Good afternoon, good afternoon, everyone. In 2022 and 2024, Surrey Police Service, we did extensive community consultations. From that, we developed a lot of information from the community, a lot of community, a lot of things the community wanted, wanted from our service, how we want, they wanted us to do business. So we developed a model based on that, a lot of that information. So today, we have Inspector Sook Sudhu and Inspector Darren Shepherd here to explain and walk us through the district model.
Chief, Mr. Chair, can we get the first slide, please? So with our current district model, we have an inspector and staff sergeant assigned to each one of our five districts. And we know that each one of our districts throughout our city are very unique and have different challenges. So challenges that we may see or experience and opportunities we have in District One are completely different than that of District Five. So it's important for us to ensure that we're looking at it from a lens of how can we support each one of those distinct communities and how can we be engaged and involved? So overall, the demographics are different, the population bases are different, the challenge and opportunities that exist within each are different as well. So for us, it was important that we were designing a model that meets the needs of each one of those communities. And as district inspectors, along with our staff sergeants and our teams, we're all getting a certain piece. And when you're bringing it all together, you have the whole, but it's important we're also focusing on pieces as well because they're very unique. Next slide, please. So the district inspector position, looking at it kind of from an internal lens in terms of working with our staff, or you know, we have several goals that we're open on achieving, but we're working with the same officers that are being deployed to the exact same districts during their service while they're all there within that area. So what that allows for is that client community. They're beginning to understand what are the challenges in that district that they're working in and what are the challenges that, within each community within that district as well. So it's not a centralized model. They're not working throughout, one day you could be in one area and the next day or another. It's consistency. Consistency is where we begin to see those connections build and where we begin to see that growth happen between police and the community as well. Along with that, the district inspector, also along with the staff sergeant, once we begin to have that consistency, it improves our quality control. That's, that's really important for us as well because when you have that direct oversight within each district, again, moving away from a centralized model allows us to really focus in on that quality. Given that each community is going to have different dynamics, different challenges and ongoing issues that may be affecting them. Once we have, as we're developing that right now, we're building that, we're building those teams and we're really flushing those out, what allows us to do now is start honing really in on, on our particular communities. So finding those patterns, the trends, the hotspots. What are our challenges in our community? What are the areas that we need to gather more information on? So our focus becomes really informing our frontline staff, informing ourselves as well. What are those unique challenges within each one of those districts? And what does that mean in order for us to coordinate our efforts? So it allows us as the district inspectors to coordinate our internal resources accordingly for our needs just within that district, not necessarily focused on outside, but working collaboratively with our other district inspectors as well, but really focusing on what we need there. Also allows us to adjust our resources. Having complete command and control of the resources within my district allows me to see from, from, from a higher level, where are our needs? What do I need to adjust? What do I need to move? And it allows us to do that within the district level without impacting any of the other districts as well. Next slide, please. So for us to be properly informed, it's important that, of course, as the district inspectors, we have those ongoing discussions with our community partners. And each one of the districts, again, are very unique and very different. So, you know, faith-based, business associations and all of our diverse communities. So really engaging and understanding on an ongoing basis. We're doing the community consultations, which are great, but we want to ensure that they're ongoing. It's, it's a living practice. We continue to adjust and grow as required. So for us, the goal becomes, of course, when we're understanding what the community's priorities are, it allows us to develop that crime reduction strategy for each one of our districts that's very unique. The strategies that we may be implementing in District Three, where I am in Newton, will not be similar to that of District One. There will be some adjustments and changes that go in place in order for us to be successful in each one of them. Ultimately, the goal with all of that is to continue to enhance community trust and continue to build that and hearing from the community and adjusting and being nimble as well while we're advancing our ongoing initiatives. Next slide, please. Some of the teams that we have available to us that allow us to address some of the challenges that come, come forward. So sometimes what we may have is an issue that's ongoing. It's allocated to our patrol resources. Patrol resources are on shift work. They're changing, but we want to have ownership. We want to have that consistency. So our districts have project teams that allow them to do a variety of different, including targeted enforcement. So if there's something that needs ongoing attention, consistency, they have the ability to do that. Community concerns as well. For example, with us, we have areas where the weather gets nicer, there's challenges around causing disturbances and so on. So how do we have that consistency in working with the businesses, working with the community as well, ensuring that we're all collaborating as we're trying to find these solutions instead of, again, passing it on from, from different member to different member? So what it, what it does is it allows us to ultimately support community partnerships, and we're having a more thoughtful response rather than frontline attending all the time. It's really focused on what the challenges are, and we have a very focused approach to resolving those issues as well. Next slide, please. Our community partnership support section is our civilian side of the house, and they have a variety of different programs that we're currently reimagining as well while we're developing into our district model. Our community programs coordinators are overseeing our block watch programs, our community engagement efforts, also involved in our integrated service teams, doing CFTHS and business engagement. Our diversity unit are working and supporting us, but based in newcomers. Again, those dynamics throughout the city are different depending on which district you're, you're working in. It's very unique. So really focusing on what each district needs and how can we design programs that meet their needs as well. Our victim services, youth programs, and Inspector Shepherd will speak more to that, but we do have civilian support that work with them. But our goal right now is we're aligning our civilian teams to better support a district model which lends itself to specific programming. That's ultimately increasing the coordination between these sections and creating a unique response and a plan for each district as we continue evolving. Pass it over now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Chief Lipinski, and members of the board. My name's Darren Shepherd. I'd like to speak to you first about our youth services unit that we're developing here at SPS. Our school resource officer program will be one portion of our youth team. At our end state, we'll have a sergeant in each one of the districts and assigning school resource officers for each specific district based on the call load. Each secondary school will have an assigned school resource officer, and that school resource officer will also be responsible for the feeder schools, so the elementary and middle schools. The advantage of that is that students, young people, will have consistency when they transfer from one school to the next over a number of years. That provides an opportunity to develop a relationship based on trust. We want to develop a model where, when the police are seen in schools, both with parents, staff, administrators, students, the automatic assumption is that something is wrong, that it should be a normal part of attending school, knowing that the police are part of your community, that they're there to support your community and they're somebody that you can trust. So developing those relationships over a period of extended time. Excellent. The other portion of our youth services unit is our enhanced youth officer program. A lot of the vulnerable youth or high-risk youth that are in the city of Surrey aren't actually attending school, and it's often been a demographic that we haven't been able to reach with a more traditional school resource officer program. So by having the enhanced officer youth program, we'll be working with probation. We'll have a Yankee 30 card, which will be one of our SPS members along with a Surrey Police probation officer. They'll be responsible for ensuring abidance by conditions that youth may be on and providing them support as they, whatever process they're involved in. We also have a dedicated member working with indigenous youth, incredibly valuable portion of our team. We attend regularly to a variety of indigenous youth programs. Constable Steve News attends weekly to our Blue Eagles program. Here's currently under development a foundry in Marsuri, which will essentially be a one-stop shop for youth. They'll be providing various health services or counseling services. It's often problematic, especially for kids, to try to find assistance and be bounced from one place to the next. So this will provide an opportunity when a youth is experiencing some challenges or difficulties, to sort of get everything they need under one roof. We're also going to be part of the RAB, the Gang Intervention Program, and we'll have members with the Family and Youth Resource Support Team along with two members dedicated to youth exploitation and youth trafficking. By time in youth, I've seen the numbers steadily increase in that regard, partly due to social media and other challenges that our young people are facing these days, and it requires specialized training, and we intend to have members. We do have members that are especially trained in that area. And as we continue to grow a member dedicated to youth mental health, a significant issue, I think we've all seen that coming out of COVID, some of the challenges that kids have faced post-isolation and trying to get the support that they need. Our valuable civilian members will be supporting us in these areas with two civilians on the first team, two on the Yip team. And then a very important portion of our youth work is also in restorative justice. Traditionally, you know, charging a youth and potentially causing difficulties for them down the road has proven to be problematic. So we want to give kids an opportunity right off the hop to have a chance to make amends for their actions, accept responsibility. That's an important. Next slide, please. Some other programs of note, I won't go through them all here, but our community partners that we work with include Yo Bro, Yo Girl, some faith-based programming. We participate in Wickfest, Blue Eagles, as I mentioned earlier, an incredibly valuable weekly program, First Shift Indigenous Hockey. We had our inaugural SPS Youth Soccer Academy last year. Very well attended, very well reported on by the community, something that our community wanted to see, what we learned from our community consultations in 2021 and 2024. Mackie Place in District One, also a valuable resource for youth. We attend there on a weekly basis to interact with kids. This summer will be our first Surrey Police Youth Police Academy. And again, I mentioned the restorative justice program and gang prevention and intervention, working with our partners at CFSU. Next slide, please. Our road safety section, traditionally known as traffic unit, but ours is more encompassing. So road safety comes in a variety of forms and requires a variety of varied responses. Our traffic enforcement unit is what you would consider to be a traditional traffic unit, essentially using intelligence-led policing to determine what locations are causing injuries to motorists, cyclists, pedestrians, and attempting to bring those down. We work extensively with our partners at ICBC and also participate in national provincial programs. They'll also be providing traffic control of major incidents and events. Next slide, please. A new unit that we brought, are building up right now, is our community response unit, our T crew unit for traffic. They'll be involved in road education and road safety education with members of our community, particularly high school students. That's a very high-risk time in a student's life when they first get that driver's license. So having that support for them, children in terms of pedestrian safety, and also our seniors enhancing their traffic safety as they move around the city. Our strategies will be developed in coordination with our stakeholders, and they'll attempt to reduce and eliminate chronic traffic complaints. Even if a complaint doesn't necessarily come in from a high-risk area, if it's causing police-like concerns in a neighborhood, that's something that our key crew is dealing with. And they'll also be prioritizing high-profile or sensitive complaints, delegating enforcement action. Next slide, please. Car driving unit. We've all seen the statistics coming out of COVID. Car driving is on the rise, both drug and alcohol-related, and we've experienced a number of serious collisions in Surrey over the past few years that are tied back to that. So having a dedicated unit, car driving charges by alcohol and drugs continually get more and more complicated due to a variety of factors. So having specially trained officers, including DRE officers of drug recognition experts to remove and charge drug and alcohol impaired drivers and provide in-service training to members of our frontline in how to examine or how to conduct a car driving investigations. Slide, please. Last but certainly not least, our collision investigation unit. That's an area that goes beyond, above and beyond the capabilities of frontline when it comes to investigating traffic collisions, perhaps does not need the necessary requirements for calling out the I-Cars Integrated Collision Reconstruction Service. So these specially trained members will again have reconstruction training. They'll be involved in both serious and fatal MBIs, any police-involved collisions, and high-profile and sensitive collisions, and working with the city of Surrey and our other stakeholders like ICBC to identify traffic engineering and road safety hazards and potential solutions for these, whether it's traffic calming devices or improvement, sightlines or visibility at intersections. Community partnerships program. Probably seen on social media, a lot of fantastic work that's being done by our C1 unit, primarily focused on dealing with vulnerable communities in our, in our city. They have a variety of initiatives that they've undertaken, coffee with the community, extensively with Special Olympics, Walk the Beat Wednesdays. So just simply getting out, walking around communities, neighborhoods, and engaging with our community. Supper for seniors, so that's both in-person and meal deliveries, and officer training on connecting with marginalized communities. A lot of our population in Surrey are perhaps new immigrants and have come from an area where they've experienced generational trauma and dealing with police. A different standard of policing is obviously applied here. We want to ensure that when newcomers to Canada are here, that they understand police are allies to them, somebody that they can trust and not somebody to fear. So there's an educational portion that goes along with that as well. Next slide, please. Crisis intervention and prevention, primarily dealing with mental health calls. Again, these are steadily increasing in our community. They do require specialized training, and we will be actively involved with Fraser Health in having a CAR-67 program for partners that be Surrey Police Service sworn officer with a Fraser Health nurse who specialize in mental health care, attending calls where persons are in crisis, mental health crisis, and helping to de-escalate the situation. Very much valuable asset and supplement to amazing work being done by our frontline members, and that program is a citywide program. Slide, please. Our emergency operations and planning unit. It was created to design a consistent and standardized approach in response to major events. Again, we've hired some amazing people in SPF, SPS, pardon me, with some amazing background in responding to major events, emergency events we've all seen in the last couple of years, the kind of chaos and certainty that can result and having a unit that can be stood up and prepared for all those eventualities. This goes along with inspection of critical infrastructure, which has come under attack in recent years, and providing business continuity, pardon me. We'll be delivering effective and efficient service delivery that all police involves special events as well. So planning, briefing what went well, what do we need to improve for next year's event? And the continuity will lead to a better, more efficient police response.
Thank you. Before I open, two questions from the board. I was going to mention at the beginning of our meeting here today, we have a very full agenda here this evening. So I'm just going to respectfully ask that, that directors keep their questions specific and direct and, and limited to, to ensure that all the directors have an opportunity to share. So if there are any questions for the inspectors? Director Stud?
Thank you, Chief, and Chair, to Inspector Sudhu, I would think, with reference to your, your districts. What's your complement now in District One? Is it, is it complete?
District One.
Yes.
Complement as in?
And power of membership, pardon me. Are you fully operational in District One?
Yes, we are, we are.
So do you have any of these services in place that we're talking about now?
Yes.
The youth programs and things like that?
Yes, they're all in place and they continue to evolve.
Okay, and perhaps for the edification of some people here, District One is Wally. How about District Three?
District Three, right now, yes, all the programs that were discussed here is all operational in District.
So you need no more assistance in District Three as of?
These are operational.
I'm sorry?
All of these programs are currently operational in District Three, yes.
So you're completely, you're completely self-sufficient in District Three now?
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think Director Stud, I think you're getting at whether we have enough police officers there from an SPS perspective. We are in control of the frontline. On the investigative side, there's some assistance that is being rendered by the RCMP. We will have complete control by the end of March.
Good, thank you. And if I may, Chair, one more?
Absolutely.
With the youth programs, you've mentioned the RAB. Are you, will you be involved or have you got any MOU's yet with the safe program?
The MOU is with the district.
With the safe program, the, the anti-gang program that's currently ongoing?
Are you referring to Surrey Safe Schools?
No, I'm referring to the safe program, Surrey Anti-Gang Empowerment Group. You are?
I'm calling it MOU.
Okay, is that a, that's the?
We're examining that program right now to the efficiencies. There's funding issues that they're experiencing right now. Working through that on their end, it's pretty efficient.
Thank you, thank you. Any more questions from directors? We also have Director Moore online too, so I need to keep her in my eyes as well. There's no more question? Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
All right, moving, oh, good. Moving forward to reports?
We have, first up, we have the Chief Constable Hiring and Diversity Report.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of comments for, for the board in relation to our hiring and diversity update. Just as a reminder, there's two streams of hiring. There's brand-new recruits that go through the Justice Institute of B.C. And we have no issues in hiring people for the JI. And the other stream is experienced officers that come from all across Canada, but mostly they come from B.C. agencies, and we're doing well there as far as recruiting. And so we have a group that, in fact, is Friday, have finished up their training, experienced officers, and will be deploying in the weeks to come in various areas. That's one category. The other category is the diversity, and I'm very pleased to report that we're doing well there. The numbers are, are before you. We pay special attention to this, and we hire both brand-new recruits and experienced officers. We really like to see the community represented in the SPS. That's the way it should be from a community policing model, and we are doing well towards that goal. I can tell you that the recruits that apply, we have a long list of people, young people, that most of them live in Surrey, and that's very, very positive for the future. I'll stop there if there's any questions in relation to this report.
Chair, and I need to dominate the conversation here through, through Chair, Chief Lipinski, thank you. I want to confirm, you know, through my presence here, that the city is absolutely committed to a safe, effective transition and as efficiently as it can be. So remove, alleviate any doubts there. We are here to see this work, and in order to do that, we have to work in concert with each other. So the question I'm going to ask with, with respect to recruitment and hiring with the 24, 2024 budget, the SPS had planned to hire 180 officers. By the end of the year, fewer than 50 or roughly were onboarded. So in 2025, a new provisional budget reflects a target of hiring 140. How confident are you, Chief, that of achieving this target? What measures are in place to ensure that it's met? And additionally, what is the current hiring cadence for 2025? And is it aligned to onboarding of 140?
Yes, we are aligned for 140. There's a number of issues at play. When we're talking about brand-new recruits, I cannot hire as many people as I would like to, to put through the Justice Institute of B.C. There's three intakes at the JI, and of course, there's 13 municipal police agencies in B.C. And everybody wants a seat. They can only, at the present time, take in 64 sitting, 64 recruits sitting. So we've been working with the JI and the provincial government to increase that seat capacity, and hopefully, hopefully, we'll be able to do that for the fall intakes. That will give us a lot more momentum towards the 140. With respect to the experienced officers, I'm very confident that we will reach our goal as far as the investigators and on the frontline, the supervisors and experienced constables. So I feel pretty good about it. There's unknowns, there's always unforeseen circumstances. We all know that across Canada, all police agencies are, are going after the same applicant pool. I feel that we have a little bit of a lead only because we're brand-new and people want to join a brand-new organization. So right, right now, I'll say that my confidence is high. Thank you.
Follow-up?
Sure.
Of the 140, does that include the JIVC?
Yes.
Or does it include the, and the experience?
No, it's both the experience and the JIVC. Just looking at my numbers here, thank you, yep.
First, follow it. Thank you, Chair. What is your confidence for the J.I.B.C. this year, Chief Dino?
We've got a lot.
That's what I mean.
Okay, my allotment going in, they go class by class, depending on the demand. So we have my last class, we had thirteen, this class, we've got ten.
Is it, pardon me, is it protracted for the year? Do you know how many you have for twenty twenty-five?
No, no, they, it'll be like sixty days out, and they make an assessment.
Director Allen?
Yes, just a quick question on, it says that you have thirty-five languages spoken amongst the SPS, SPS sworn officers. Can you give a breakdown of what language?
You can. Yeah. I don't have it here.
Didn't think of what.
I didn't memorize it. Okay, thank you. Take care of that. Okay, Mr. Chair, if we can, we can move on to do we want to make a motion to accept? Okay, thank you.
This report? Make a motion? Thank you. Thank you. All favor. Close.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The next item, O P C C twenty-three, twenty-four annual report. I'll make a couple of comments here for benefit of the board being new members. O P C stands for the Office, Office of the Police Complaint Commission. And it's an oversight body that monitors the internal investigations by our professional standards unit. So we have a police act in B.C., and there's a listing of potential transgressions in the police act. And when there is a complaint coming to us or to the O P C C, it goes to the O P C C for assessment, and if a complaint is accepted, then it is investigated. So I encourage you to look at that link, and it gives you a background of what the process is. They have process maps there, and it's, it's a little bit complicated, but we've been working with this system here in B.C. for a decade plus, and it is a very good oversight, third-party, removed system that oversees all our complaints. As we move through the various board meetings, I'll bring you more and more information. I'll add to that of how the process works, and I just don't want to, at the present time, overload you with all the ins and outs of systems, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from directors? Okay, make a motion to accept O P C C twenty-three, twenty-four annual report. All in favor? Close. Moving on to fourth quarter.
Mr. Chair, if I may, my number five chiefs update, I have a couple of slides that encompasses the number three and number four items there, and I wonder if I can just show those slides and then have a have a summary conversation with those two agenda items. So if we could get Forrest and my slides up there. I'll go right to the P O J update. Please, next slide. So again, just to highlight that we are responsible outline in number one, which is Wally, and number three, which is Newton. And we have investigative covered off in number one, and we have most of investigative covered off on three, and that will be completed by the end of March. Is where we stand. The calls for service, although it's a smaller geographic side of the city, it's, I'll round out the numbers, but it's about fifty percent of the calls throughout Surrey in those two areas. Oh, I think it's around forty-seven. And so our thought process then is to, in the summertime, we're working with our colleagues, the RCMP, to look at District Five, which is the South Surrey. Now, the mobilization part of this, which means we're hiring, and at the same time, the RCMP are demobilizing. It's, it sounds simple, as in one in, one out. It's not simple because it's in fact a little bit easier for me to hire. I hire from this area. People live in this area. The RCMP have to demobilize, and some of them are being moved or at their request want a detachment, perhaps somewhere outside of the lower mainland, sometimes out of the province. So that means they got to move. And so we have to be sensitive to that. Families have to be moved and timing and so forth and so on. So it is a bit of a complex task, if you will, in demobilization, demobilization. The transition itself, we are meeting with the RCMP, we are meeting with the city, and we are meeting, of course, with the province. And at one point prior to P O J, we certainly had the federal government involved as well. So three levels of government and the RCMP and Surrey Police Service and the Surrey Police Board. And we moved the transition forward. So we're here now, we have momentum, and we feel very, very positive about the future, and we're putting our plans together. We're still in the early stages. We've been P O J, I believe, for about seventy-five days now, and so there's much more to come. Let's move on to the next slide because it gets into the crime stats. This is what's really important. I note that the crime stats talk about year-to-date in twenty twenty-four, but look at this chart. And the blue is Surrey. And as a comparator, Vancouver in the yellow. And B.C. at the top. So very clear, very clear from a violent crime rate, we're slowly, slowly tracking down. And that's a good news story for the citizens of Surrey. Equally as important, the next slide is property crime. It's property crime. So we've always been below the B.C. average, and as a comparator, I just took another large city. And we're tracking very, very slowly down. Now, crime prediction is, is quite a science and in some cases, a bit of an art. And in order for us to be accurate as we go through twenty twenty-four, we'll be analyzing the data, and I'll bring it here. And so you can have a very succinct, accurate view of where all the individual crime indices are going. And everything from homicides down to car break-ins. And we'll, we'll walk you through how that works and what we're doing about it. And Inspector Sudhu talked a little bit about that when we're, he was talking after the fact, a lot of the things, and having the unit stood up and so forth. And we'll, we'll go down that road hand in hand because it does get complicated. And at some point, it does rely on finances and on resources. And it's a matter of where you put your priorities. I'm a big fan of return on investment, R O I. So all those programs that you saw in the previous presentation, we are going to do some metrics to, to those programs. What's the baselines? What's the R O I on all these things? Where do we get the biggest bang for the buck? There is a lot of community programs. There's a lot of communities that want us to work with them. We can't be all things to all people. We have to select, so we have to ensure that there's fairness, but also where we have a very high return on our investment. And sometimes that's a judgment call. It's subjective because it's very difficult in crime prevention programs to measure solid outcomes. You can measure activities. You can measure how many times you went and spoke, and you talked to kids and so forth. In theory, that will pay dividends down the road. But we need to make decisions now on where our resources are going. So let's just keep that in mind. And I've got one more slide, which I think is important. I'm a, I'm a fan of community wellness, not just crime reduction. And to community wellness includes the disorder, includes those that are unhoused, the addicted, the mentally ill. And this is a summary of that, and it's, it's, things in fact are, the data is publicly available. I can tell you that the overdose deaths, looking at the charts, I do not have a chart, but it is slowly, slowly coming down, or I'll say leveling off is, is, is safe answer to that. So that, again, is a good news story. There's many theories of why that is happening. And at some point in the future, at a board meeting, we'll discuss that because it's part of community wellness. And there's other parts of government and, and non-government agencies that are involved. But I believe that my people should be part of those committees because we're the ones that get the calls two in the morning. Nobody else. And so we have to be part of that solution. It's going to take a lot of time, and there's a lot of theories on how to work through that. But what you see here today in my executive leadership team and my inspectors, we're all in on that. More to come on that. So with respect to number three, the fourth quarter crime statistics. As you saw there, we have, we have a bit of a trend year-to-date. Violent crime, again, is down three percent. Property crime is, is one percent. So, and there's a couple of indicators there, up and down and so forth, but safe to say, if you're looking at it from a statistic perspective, plus or minus three percent is a variable. We're holding steady, and that's a good story. See what happens as we move forward through twenty twenty-five. And then the overdose reports there, again, I just summarized it for you on that one slide. And we work quite closely with FIRE. They, they have very good statistics as well. And I've been in touch numerous times with Chief Moore, and we're looking at some collaboration in order to have some synergy, so we're not working at cross purposes. I'll stop there and answer any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Chief, when you say violent crime just recently is down three percent, is that year-over-year or compared to?
Year-to-date, same time last year.
Oh, you're, so you're comparing just to last year?
Yeah, yeah. And what I had on there only went in twenty twenty-three.
Right, okay.
So, and that's from Stats Canada, so they're always a year behind. So we get the big picture.
Director Stud?
Thank you, Chair, through you to the chief. My comments at this board are never, ever going to be meant to be confrontational. They're meant to be productive moving forward. So I want to make that very clear. As I said, we are absolutely committed to a good, safe, effective progression. So I ask questions in the, in the interest of information for all of us. The question I have is, is how SPS is managing call volumes now? And are U D experiencing any problems in this regard?
I think I'll ask Deputy Lasage to make a few comments too, but we are handling it well. I recall, you know, working towards November twenty-ninth, and to give you some context, there was a lot of chatter, are we ready or not and so forth? We felt all along that we would be ready. We worked with our colleagues, the RCMP, very closely, and of course, November twenty-ninth and midnight hit, and we were on Wally and Newton, and they were throughout the rest of the city. It went well. The call load itself, right now, to date, is going well. We have a new shift schedule that we looked at the call load from a thousand-foot level and adjusted our shifts to manage that. Now, going forward, what I'd like to do is do a deep dive into the statistics and refine the, the shift schedule, if need be, about where do we have our resources and when? Obviously, Friday night, you got to have the maximum number of resources, and Monday morning, maybe not. But at the present time, we are doing well with managing our calls. And we are working with the dispatch center, and you will, at one point, have a tour of the, what's called the OCC, which is where our calls are being dispatched. And we can ask, answer questions as a result of that visit as well. But Mike, I'll turn to you. Mike is in charge of the frontline, and so perhaps he can give you a little bit more insight.
Yeah, I can. I think we're adequately, we're, we're tracking the number of calls per shift, so I get a report at the end of a twelve-hour period. Average, what we're looking at for calls that are being held past that period are anywhere from two to twelve. So we're keeping that number down. Those are the calls that that came in that we, that we haven't responded to at the end of that shift period, so they will come on to the end. So we're not experiencing, experiencing any high volumes that we're not attending for the priority calls. We're monitoring shift, we monitor at that twelve-hour period, our resourcing levels. We compare that to the calls for service, and we're, we're not seeing any, we're not seeing any issues.
Thank you.
You reminded me something, if I may, Mr. Chair. So calls are, are the deputy mentioned priority calls. So emergency calls are called P one, priority one. And the standard across Canada is to get to those calls within eight minutes. And we, we are capable of doing that very easily. The RCMP have done it before. They do it now. We do it now. So I'm comfortable with that. Then there's P twos, and there's some urgency, but it's not somebody's life being threatened. And there is no Canada-wide standard on that. Typically, it's about twelve minutes, sometimes fifteen. And then there's the P threes, which is, can, you know, somebody came home and then something's missing from their backyard and, and, you know, there, there's no urgency to attend right now. So, and here's what's important for the board going forward. We will do a deeper dive in all that data. And then the question becomes, we have to ensure, we have to ensure that we go to those P ones, emergency calls, have enough people situated correctly to get there within eight minutes. Then the question becomes for the board, what's the service stance? Or P twos? Non-emergency calls, but urgency, some sort of urgency. It could be somebody that is creating a bit of a ruckus, but not a danger to anybody, et cetera, et cetera. So if you want somebody there as a board in ten minutes, eight minutes, you need more resources. You want somebody there twelve, fifteen is sort of where it's at now, et cetera. A lot will depend on the, the reply, or I'll say concerns expressed by the public. Do we get complaints that they waited too long? Those are all things that are brought into the fold. We'll show you all that, and those are the decisions that you will have to make going forward.
Director Stud?
I'll go to Director. Director Moore first?
Oh, Director Moore or Director Allen?
Oh, sorry, Director Allen. I thought she had her hand up. Director Allen first?
Okay, so I just want to, just based on like the service standards, and I want to just double back to how the programs you're talking about coordinated with nurses for mental health calls. What does that look like in terms of these service standards if you have a, a P one call and it is a mental health call?
Yes, I can tell you, I'll defer to Mike here in a moment, but here's the comment I'll make. Getting back to wellness, it's called CAR six-seven, and we have one. In my view, in the future, I'll be bringing here a proposal for two. I do believe superficially that the stats are there to support it. And I'd like to go down that road, and I think right now we're doing fine. You know, we're, we're maxing out. I think it's fair to say maxing out, but Deputy, any comments on that?
Yeah, we have especially, our specially trained people who are in that unit. But when it comes to, when we think about with the nurse as well, then we have a specific time period that we're trying to use within the nurse, and if the nurse insured, does the nurse, are they coming in or they call in sick? We have the police officer. Sometimes I can say a lot of it depends on, is the nurse available and with our members at the time? We have a nurse right now.
To, it's still just nurses?
Correct. We'd, we'd like to have more. Correct, we'd, we'd like to have more coverage. And what we're thinking, I'm, I'm getting ahead of myself here, but we will be bringing uh, more information and a presentation in the future of, of what we would like to do. The board then, uh, gives us direction. But it's got to be based, obviously, and we'll bring it here. It's on the statistics, very important.
As I say, we're, I work on Central City, so small. One car.
There you go.
Okay, Director Stut, did you have another question?
I did, if I may. And again, I hate to appear that I'm dominating the conversation here, but I've been involved in this process for considerable time, as you all know. And even from the city side, I do get a number of questions posed at me. So I think in the, I think in the best interest of, of making this as transparent as possible, I should ask some of those questions. So, uh, and again, it's, uh, with respect, Chief, to your call volume management. Uh, there've been concerns raised by members of the public, uh, being referred to the RCMP for certain calls, and yet there's no distinct public facing contact for that. Has that, have you experienced that? And yeah, can you provide clarity on how those calls are handled or whether there's any gaps? So, you know, I don't know if that refers to people referring to an incident, say in, in zone four, zone five, or if they are following up on a incident that happened before that was dispatched and to the RCMP?
Okay.
Am I clear on that?
I, I think you're talking about file management. If you want to, uh, like make a couple of comments about that. So I'll start off with, uh, so the RCMP obviously were in Wally and Newton. There's files there that have to be transferred now to us. And, uh, uh, Mike here will give a little bit of summary of what we're doing pertaining to the file transfer. The overarching theme is that public safety is not being jeopardized, and it is not. Uh, but there's a lot of work to be done to transfer files. So you have the right contact and people understand who is in charge of their file, which typically are complex files that have been going on for quite some time. But Deputy Prosek, if you want to give us a little bit of a summary on that.
Sure, so as the chief said, Director, um, we, public safety is number one, uh, when it comes to, um, transfer of any data and files. And so what we've been doing since November is working collaboratively with the RCMP. We have a joint committee, uh, on file transfer, and that includes exhibits and all of the information held on those files. And the files are big and small. So we're talking about thousands of files. Some of them are relatively simple frontline files that are usually conducted by frontline uniformed police officers. And, uh, the RCMP is applying a lens to all of the files that they have. And they're determining whether or not, based on a number of criteria, whether or not those, some of those files are eligible for transfer to the SPS for continuation of investigation. And so, um, our small team that's working, um, in conjunction with the RCMP's team, we are accepting some of those files and continuing on with the investigation. Um, like as, as I mentioned, uh, and the, the majority of those files are relatively simple frontline files. But we're getting into now the more complex files. So the files that are carried by the investigative units, in fact, we, we literally just had a, a meeting before this meeting this afternoon with our counterparts in the RCMP. And we're working on collaboratively building a process to, um, you use, uh, in transferring the, the complex investigative files to ensure that, uh, no key information is missed or dropped. And what's, uh, one of the priorities is victim and complainant management. So we want to ensure that the people that have been affected by these files and these crimes um, will continue to receive the support and the information that they need. And one of the key steps will be for complex files is a file briefing. So a handover briefing, so the, an RCMP team who has conducted an investigation, they'll be briefing the SPS team that will be taking over that file. And part of, uh, there's a whole host of criteria and items that we'll address during that file transfer process. One of them is, um, an update on the victim and, and complainant management. We want to know what the relationship was before. We want to ensure that that relationship continues with the police.
If it comes to, you know, if it comes to the people falling into the, to the OCC, they do both, both sides. So if they're calling in, they'll, they'll be able to look, is it an RCMP file? Then they'll work on the RCMP side. If it's an SPS file, they'll be able to just work on the SPS. If that's for the ones that'll call in right away.
I think that pretty well addresses what I'm getting at. My question is, and the questions that we get asked is, if I, if I'm a victim of a crime, say last year, and I'm phoning to see what the status of my, like nobody's talked to me, or what's the status of my file? Do you, uh, does the SPS refer those? Is there an RCMP number they can call? Is there a conduit? So, you know, if I want to find out what's happening on my investigation two years ago, uh, how does that person get connected in a, a smooth and efficient way that, you know, like is there a?
Yes, they're coming, yeah, same way they would for any other files. Whether it's, they call us the same either the non-emerge or the emergency line. And they would, OCC would, would then reach out, find out who the investigator was. Then they would, we would do either, you know, if they knew who it was, put them in contact, message would be sent to the team who's on, do you need to be, do you need somebody to talk to somebody today? No, okay, well, we will find and hook you up with investigators.
Uh, Director Chima, one.
Yeah, I'm under you. So I, I'm listening to what you're saying, this, and just building off of what Director Stut was talking about. It's that there's this transition period. Um, there may be some overlap, but it seems, what I'm saying is that other than a briefing, the files handed over, there's no kind of overlap transition joint work on these complicated round of joint files.
Generally, that's correct. So an RCMP, if a, if a file is selected for transfer, um, the RCMP will finish the tasks that they need to complete. And then that transition period will take place. They will, and then there'll be a new team assigned to it, take it over.
So there's, there's a standardized criteria for handing over files?
Yes, and that is an evolving process that started November. We started again with the relatively simple files. There was a, there's a large number of them. And so that, that work continues, but we're getting into now the complex files. And so that's, that's a different process that we're establishing right now.
Thank you. And once again, my final is for this round anyways, actually, actually a compliment on your, your attack on that. I don't think I'll ever go to a meeting that that doesn't come up. And, uh, you know, the stats are, are varied, they come from so many, um, so many different sources, they're, they're really hard to, yeah, to sort out. But I did take notice to your reference to Surrey Fire. And, uh, their particularly second responder program. Um, that, that's an excellent, uh, an excellent program. And I'm pleased that, uh, that you're involved with that or involved with them. That's, thank you.
This concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
One more, Director.
Oh, sorry.
All right, it's just, I, I, I don't know if it's a common term, but the crime stats that are now, is there a concern that given that we're in a series of growing city, very immigrant, forward Surrey, uh, population that the crime stats are down because they're being reported less?
Very complicated, uh, very good question. So a couple of things, uh, this city is growing by leaps and bounds. Uh, I, I noted that there was some new data that was released that, uh, Surrey is going to be the biggest city sooner than initially anticipated. Uh, with that, uh, we as a police service and a police board have to be prepared for that. And if you just even think of all these people coming in and just think of just, just the number of added cars by way of example, electric or otherwise, but there is going to be uh, a lot more collisions, start there. And then go from people issues to crime and so forth, whatever it may be. So, um, we will in due course, uh, be undertaking some modeling of, of what that might entail as we move, uh, forward on that. So, uh, very good question, uh, thank you for that.
I think that's what, when you seen the slide on community first and some of the outreach work that we do, you know, we're focusing on those areas to be able to be, you know, to, to create a relationship or create an area where they're, they, they are supportive of the police. They recognize that we're there. Um, like I say, there the stats in those areas, the stats will come up as they get, as they feel comfortable to. And from what we've seen, and I personally have been to a lot of the engagements, uh, people from other countries that don't, that are really fearful of the police. Uh, when I've seen it over time, the change in some of those areas, that they're actually comfortable and actually talking to the, our members. I think that's our intention along is to, as we continue that, that those areas feel comfortable talking to the police. And that there are kids that are coming with them as well, that the kids are comfortable if something happens to report to the police. That's our intention with, a lot of our programs are built that way. So that that on the ground engagement is going to be, you know, it's going to show the support.
Director Kim, something. Um, Chief, I heard you say some of the, some of the reasons why we see, um, or may not see, um, increases or declines. But one of the factors moving forward is, uh, the economic uncertainty, difficulty to face it. Not only as a, as a city, but as a province, as a country globally. And so, you know, seeing, having supported, you know, when Syrian community came, uh, in 2016, I remember many of these families were without fathers in Florence. It was like, do we have the kids working or in school? And they had to make some hard decisions. And then there was, you know, cutting corners. Sometimes these crimes are through necessity and absolute, you know, need for survival. And so that should be taken into consideration too, when modeling of, you know, what, what, what the, what the world will look like in the future, especially in the near future.
Uh, very good comments, uh, geopolitical impacts assault on many different levels. And it will, uh, to some degree, impact police demand on whatever that may look like. Uh, and so there is that uncertainty as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just really want to, just before we make a motion to accept, I want to thank you for this. I know many of our board, this, we're new to policing and some of the concerns and some of the, but also some of the successes that we're seeing. You know, it is, it is good to hear this and be able to be really caught up. I really want to thank Director Stut, Stut for your questions, your history and experience policing. Definitely a huge value to this board, so thank you. If I can make a motion to accept, uh, three reports, the fourth quarter crime stats, the 2024, this drug overdose report, and the chief constable's updates. A favor, pose. Thank you very much. Moving forward, we're continuing on to eat information. Melissa?
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair. So these are two information items for you. We have an upcoming B C Association of Police Boards meeting in May. Um, we do have a budget for the boards to attend conferences, both of the B C police boards and the Canadian police boards. Um, so if you are interested in the conference, whether it's one day or the full conference, if you could just let my other, myself or Marion know, and we can make arrangements to register for you, uh, for that. Um, there's also a call for resolutions. I think at this point, we should probably, uh, observe the conference and, and, um, get to work a little bit more as a board before we determine if there's resolutions we wanted to put forward to that. Having said that, if you do feel that there's something pressing that you'd like to bring up as a board at the conference, again, let me know. We can bring it up, uh, in a more fulsome report at the March meeting. So that's it for those two agenda items.
Do we need to accept these? I don't think so. I don't think we need to accept. Moving on to F, correspondence, letter from ATM Lewis, Melissa.
Thank you very much. So this letter came from Glenn Lewis, who you have all met. Um, if you haven't, you will soon. Um, and so what happens is the province assessments the boards. Um, because we, the board itself was part of the police jurisdiction assessment that occurred, uh, late last year. Um, so they do have all of this information from us. So I don't know that we would be a board that they'd be coming to for this information. Um, they have access to all of this information. File our meeting minutes with the province monthly. Um, and, uh, obviously our policies are filed with the province and our governance manual is field aligned. So if we do have a request from the ATM, uh, we'll address it at the time. And that's, I'll say about that, Mr. Chair.
And do we need to accept that? Do you need to make a motion to accept this?
I don't think so.
Okay. Moving on to G, service and policy complaints.
Thank you. So this is a service or policy complaint that we received with respect to a fatal automobile accident on Christmas. Um, and, uh, what happens with this for your affairs? We did talk a little bit about the police complaints process and the service or policy complaints that come to the board. So the complaints that come to the board aren't related to conduct of members. It's related specifically to the service policies that you approve. Um, so with this, what we've done, um, is Administrator Seer, in his time here, had referred this back to Chief Lipinski to review policies, um, as well as equipment in the vehicles to ensure that we have the, both the policy and the equipment available to ensure that we have the ability to manage these scenes appropriately. Uh, that report will come back to you with recommendations at the next meeting. So under the police complaints process for service or policy complaints, we do have 20 business days to respond back to the complainant with our course of action. And under the police act, we have a very prescriptive course of action that you take. So we've done that. And then there is no timeline to complete the investigation. However, we will finish this one. Um, we'll have a report ready for you through the chief constable at the March meeting.
Along, there's no new business. This time we're going to open the floor to any public question period, if there's any of the public. Wish any?
We don't. And I just want to acknowledge, um, the public did have a hard time hearing us. And so there were some members of the public that, that leave. So we still have a, a debrief on the location that we're having these meetings to ensure that we're meeting the needs of the public. So I do apologize publicly to those who came and could not hear.
And I, but I do know there were potentially questions online as well.
We have not received any.
Not received any, so. So next meeting, the next meeting for the Surrey Police Board is yet to be determined. We will determine that and post that by, on website and on.
By tomorrow.
By tomorrow, yeah. Okay, so we will post that date tomorrow. When and where, Director Stut?
Excuse me, uh, my apologies for jumping on this one late, uh, Mr. Chair. For the inquiries from the public online, if you, if you get them online, how, how do they get to you?
So I have.
Do you, you got a magic?
I have all the magic background. Uh, I have, uh, somebody who monitors the questions through our YouTube feed, and I have not received any. No, we have not received any. So then what I would do is I would just read the question out loud and I would have the chair prefer it to.
Potentially you might get one tomorrow.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And, and with that, do we, do we keep a record of those questions for, for the board meetings? Or is it only, how do we go about doing that?
It depends on the question. So if it's a very complicated question, what we would do is give it to the chief and we would bring it back to the next board meeting. Uh, if it's a simple question that a member of the public just wants to understand something, I will handle it one-on-one. So it really just is subjective.
Okay. Uh, if I can make a motion to go into closed, in favor, pose. Now the adjourning inaugural police board meeting. February 12th. Thank you very much.